Welcome to the October 24th meeting of the East Bridgewater School Committee. I will now take a motion to open the meeting.
So moved by Ellen, second by Scott.
We need to do roll call votes tonight because Gordon's with us remotely, so Gordon?
Yes, I.
Yes, say his name. He did. Gordon, Gordon, I.
Foster, I.
Walker, I.
Pennington, I.
Fidler, I.
Fury, I.
Please rise and for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you to EB Cam for live streaming and recording our meeting. And we will begin with our report from our Student Advisory Council Representative Amelia.
Um, I don't have much, kind of a well now between now and Thanksgiving, Christmas break, you know, last week was super exciting, a lot going on. So we had a lot of events, we had the pep rally, the football game, the dance on Saturday night. So now the next big things would be like Patterpuff, we moved that from homecoming week that would usually take place like earlier in the week and it'll be right before Thanksgiving break, so I feel like it's a good time and to kind of spread things out so everyone's not so busy. This Saturday is haunted halls at the Mitchell School, so it's a good event. It's hosted by the music and drama department, so should be exciting, I'll be working it, so I'm excited. I think that's really all I have for now, term one ends next week, so that's exciting.
Make sure you bring your report.
A little nerve wracking, yeah, of course. So, yeah, I think that's it for tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And next we have Superintendent's Corner.
Very quick, Central School Building Committee update. Dr. Williams was voted in as the Chair this evening of the Central School Building Committee along with Vice Chair Kate Byrne, the Central School Principal, and Melanie Dean from the town, Town Accountant B Secretary. And we have, we'll be scheduling a meeting with MSBA to come in person to speak to the entire committee to sort of point us in the right direction how things are going, talk with Dr. Williams, and we'll set that up for tomorrow going forward. And I think our next meeting, we talked tonight, would be November 7th, keeping in the same schedule of the Tuesday nights. Nothing really else to report, that we haven't contracted a company yet, and we've got a long ways to go, but there will be some meetings going forward. As you know, we have trouble getting employees, no matter where the employee is at, whether it's an English teacher, math teacher, an instructional support assistant, or nurse. We are having trouble contracting the nurses and getting nurses to stay at the school because they can contract out in hospitals or in some other healthcare avenue at the community at large. However, Dr. Williams has come and did some legwork, went around and called around other districts and found out what other districts are paying for their sub nurses so that we could get a substitute when we need a substitute, and if we can even find one. And she has asked for us to increase our daily rate of pay to $180 for a substitute nurse. She's provided us with backup, as you can see what Middleborough, Weymouth, Norwell, and Silver Lake Regional pay, felt that $180 was reasonable. Dr. Williams, would you like to add anything?
No. The increase in medical needs of students, certainly we found that it is needed for us to have two nurses in the building, so when one is out, you know, certainly it's understaffed and shorthanded to deal with triage, knowing that we have regular consistent medical needs that the nurses are dealing with on a daily basis.
What was the rate before?
We were doing the regular substitute rate of $90.
Okay.
Well, we weren't really doing $90 because we really couldn't get anyone.
Right, right, but that was what was offered, which was maybe creating challenges for getting someone in.
Right. So I ask for an action item when it comes around, whether to do it now or after, but that's really kind of the discussion, that's what we had. And the second, it deals in the same category. We have medically fragile students that we have in the district. We have one at Central School at this time, and we felt that getting two nurses to support one child or the building of Central School would be more proactive, pro-solutionary, and it's the right thing to do from my vantage point morally and ethically for this, for this child. We want her to be with her peers, we certainly want any medically fragile child to stay in the district if we can support them because they're with their peers, they're closer to home, their parents are more accessible instead of sending out of district. So we would have, this child needs a one-to-one nurse throughout the day. If we were to get two nurses, we could sort of split their time with the child throughout the day. And we've talked to the parents, we have worked with the schools, with the principal, just to give a break throughout the day to the child and to the nurse. And it also helps out the Central School nurse with what Dr. Williams just said, with all the needs that we have. And also, we would like to, at some point in the future, have a lead nurse to be able to go around to the buildings and to make sure that our nurses' office are following proper protocol, are being able to handle all of the student needs and the requests and the medications and everything else that comes in to the nurses' office. What I'm asking for, and I have Jay talk to this for a minute, as Jay and I talked last week, and this, last week when I went to Mrs. Foster about this as we started this agenda, he'll give some backup on that, but one of the things that we do see is that our support with a child in the district is far more appropriate than sending a child out of district, and that's really where this is coming from. I'm asking for a full-time nurse to be put in place, and then one pilot nurse for the remainder of the school year, and we'll take data off that and to see, was it supportive? Did we need both nurses? Was, was, you know, however, is it Monday, Wednesday, Fridays, and then Tuesday, Thursdays, and then the next week, or is it half-day, or every couple of hours that the nurses are changing and then going up to the nurses' office and back? So everybody has support throughout that building. That's where we're at, but Jay, if you want to fill in on.
Sure. So in particular, in this, in this one case, we're talking about a student that is, as Superintendent ago said, medically fragile. One of the pieces is seizure activity, and the student has quite a bit of seizure activity at various times throughout their, their day in that 24-hour span. Sometimes they're at home, they have semi-convulsive hemiplegic seizures, so it can hit both sides of the brain. In some cases, they'll have them at home, they'll come in during the day, they're a little, they're still feeling some of those effects, and they're a little wiped out and exhausted and trying to get, trying to get what they can out of the day. In some cases, we've seen some absence seizures that we're keeping record of in school that the parent then shares with the medical team that's working with this child through Children's. And that's part of the, of the treatment plan that this hospital needs and the doctors need. It's been difficult, you know, to keep a nurse in this setting over the, over the year. We've had a couple of different nurses and for various reasons. I mean, some of it is, as, as Dr. Williams was saying, some of it is pay in those levels, and if they can go in and work in a hospital setting, they'll, they'll take a setting like this for a little bit, and go in and find a hospital setting and work in there, or they have different offers in different districts. So part of that leads to inconsistency for the student. And, and I think, you know, as I've had conversations with the, with the family as well as Principal Byrne, what they're asking for is just consistency. You know, they're looking to have consistency without having to send their child out of district, and I certainly think that's reasonable. You know, not only are we looking at servicing our kids within district, which is most important, to have our students in our community, I mean, you can go back to the higher report back about 10 years ago that said, anytime you can, you can service a student in district, they get so much more out of it than sending them out of district. You know, they're in the community, they're in with their peer setting, they're close to home, it's just something that we know, and I think we all know. And then obviously, if you look at it from a different angle, I mean, out-of-district placements are expensive, I think we all know that, as well as transportation if it's a day placement. One of the things, you know, Superintendent and I ago and I were talking about is even if it's a day placement, we'd still have to have a nurse on that vehicle because of the seizure activity. The driver of that vehicle drives the vehicle, they are not a medical expert, they're not going to know what to do in that kind of situation. So you're still, we're still going to incur some of that cost. One of the things that Superintendent ago and I talked about is possibly taking, one of the nursing positions is already currently in our budget, and using circuit breaker funding for one of the others for the remainder of the year. And even in this case, you know, when we look at two nurses, I don't know that we're going to be able to sign two nurses, to be frank with you. I'm hoping we can, but I'm not really sure, so. Are there any questions anybody has for me? Certainly in this case, I'll answer whatever you got.
We have one secured at this time.
Any questions?
Are the nurses going to get that $180 rate, or is it a different rate for the nurses? They, that's a substitute rate.
Right.
The $180. The nurses that are coming in, we have a contractor, the EBEA, and they are in that contract, so they will start on the contractual scale and lane that they are in. So I'm just asking just for discussion and tonight, so you would hear it, and then we'll come back.
Yep. I don't have any questions. I think you outlined it well, I think there's the social and emotional needs of the child, the medical health of the child, and the child is served by the district, right? So no matter what costs are incurred, we can help the kiddo thrive.
Exactly.
In-house, that just makes the most sense to me.
And we wouldn't necessarily utilize a substitute, knowing that we have the staff available, so that they'd be able to fill in that. And just to give the committee some perspective, I had reached out to a couple of temp agencies just to get pricing. LPNs range anywhere between 75 and 85 an hour, and RNs are ranging between 85 and 95 an hour through these agencies.
I had received some feedback from some people that had looked into nursing physicians when they were open in the community, and the rate, the rate of pay was a reason they were looking, going to look elsewhere. So this is, for what East Bridgewater pays in comparison to what some other districts pay, they were choosing the other districts. So like, this is not, for my ears, it's not the first time hearing this, that this, the nursing rate of pay in this district is not to the same as some of the others, certainly not cities, which I mean, like, we're not going to compare, right? But even when you look at this list, so I, I do think that's probably something worth looking at even in the future. Because it's not, at this point, the feedback I received from nurses who looked and were interested is it wasn't a competitive enough, competitive enough rate.
Right.
To want to do it. So it's just probably something to earmark.
Right, I think we'll take that into consideration moving on, but in the other, during COVID, during COVID, the SFR funds, people, school districts got more nurses and/or increased their pay and using SFR funds. We got two nurses during that time, we decided as a district that that was important to keep because we are seeing the high needs, so. Thank you.
We'll come back to creating and vote on that.
I can go, I can do quick, the tours and the district bullying, get out of the way, if you want.
Yeah, if you want to do that, that's fine.
So the tours, I had Mr. Silva reach out to both the advisors for the Spain and, the Spain and Italy trip and the Costa Rica trip, just because the, the world is in a fluid situation right now with unfortunate wars going on and drug cartels and this and that that are, that are happening all over the world. So I asked Mr. Silva and the advisors to reach out, we've got some information for you for the Spain and Italy trip. We are asking for times and dates when the last part of when the reimbursements could be given back to families as you, as families want to go to Spain and Italy, and families want to go to Costa Rica. When would be the last, when would be the last time that the school committee could cancel a trip? And what level are they at today? That's the information, and like Mrs. Foster said the other day, I don't know, Lauren, if you want to, it's a fluid situation and we'll just.
To use a new cliche, yeah, so to kind of reiterate what Superintendent ago has said, school staff has been in contact with the tour companies because these, the school committee approves these trips and we can also rescind that approval. My hope would be that instead of rescinding approval, we could catch all of this in time and hopefully pivot to just something that's maybe a little bit more safer and secure. So we're working on getting the timelines, like by which date do we need to make any changes and take things into consideration. So it is a situation we're watching. I know there's two trips, they're over April vacation, one's to Spain and Italy, and one is to Costa Rica. And I know just after we met to set the agenda, the US government had set a, the Global Travel Advisory for people from the United States, sort of an increase of tariffs. So just, we are looking at this, we're looking for more information so that we can hopefully make sure everybody stays safe. So that is that.
At the last school committee, we talked about the bullying and intervention plan. So we have a bullying intervention plan for East Bridgewater Public Schools that Desi had looked at, and it was, last time updated was 217. I'm going to give it back to the high school principal and to the principals, take a look at this, and we're going to go through it, make sure it's updated, and then they would like, and then bring it back to you after we look at it, update it, look at the language, I've talked to the principals, we'll come back to you. This is not your policy, this was our plan for the district. You have a policy, I think that you were going to look at it again, Ellen, on the, on the subcommittee meeting. This isn't the, the school policy, this is the intervention plan that the school district came up, the bullying and the intervention plan. I didn't want that to get confused with policy and the plan. Desi, though, found this on the website before they found the policy, and that's why they went with this, which is, any, it shouldn't say viable in here, it should say any threat to a student or any bullying potential or anything that happens to a student, it shouldn't just be viable. If it happens, or if a student comes to us, we take it as, as true, and we move forward, we do the investigation, and we do what we have to do to support, support the child. I just wanted that, just to be cleared up, that this was, this is the plan for the district following policy, but the policy, this is not the policy, okay?
So the language that was offered to be changed in the last one is from this?
No.
Not the policy that Ellen was referring to?
No, it's from the, it's from the actual policy.
Okay.
Because our policy happens to also be in the student handbook, and I'm just waiting for a, the most recent copy of the policy so that I can update it, so that it can get sent to MASC to be put up on the server.
This, this cites a lot of policy in it.
Gotcha.
And you'll see that, you'll see the word in there, and you'll see some of that, but I just didn't want people to get confused when if they look at the policy, the policy is one page, and then you cut this, this is the district line.
All set?
I think so. Anybody have any questions?
Actually, I've been curious about the bullying thing for a while. Is there like a uniform plan? If I, if I'm in ninth grade here and get bullied, and I go to my math teacher and say, child X pushed me, is there like a uniform process where he goes to the principal and reports it, and there's something investigated? Because my personal experience is when my children have reported being bullied, the teacher would ask the other kid, did you do that? They say no, and then that just kind of ends. And all we learn then is that my child's not going to go to the principal, the school, the teachers anymore because it's not going to help them at all. I'm sure others have felt that. I've just always been curious, what is the process? And if it becomes just as simply, you say they did something, and you ask the child, they say no, and it ends?
Now, we have, there is a process, and to be, I don't like the word, but totally transparent, probably didn't use the process to fidelity. And the principals may have cut corners or did not follow the policy. It is on, you know, we receive the port, we receive it, we collect the data, we interview, we use a certain investigative, investigatory process to move through, we use the paperwork that Desi provides to us, we have to report each of these incidents. We probably didn't do it to fidelity. And I believe that we're there doing it, or we will be doing it to fidelity. I've had many conversations over the last probably year, more intensified up here, this is where we see a lot of it. We see, do see a lot at the Mitchell School, I can tell you that Deb Dupre is probably one of the most thoughtful and thorough investigators that we have, when it comes to bullying and when it comes to working with a child through this. They get guidance counselors involved right away, they get the adjustment counselors involved right away, the assistant principals involved, teachers are involved. At the high school, at the junior, senior high school level, as we know, things intensify, kids get, there's more social media involved, there's a lot of things going on. There is a plan. Again, we probably did not, we did not use it to fidelity. We're on it now, we are, this should not happen again. I had Alicia St. Floren last week on Tuesday speak to all three principals via Zoom meeting. All three principals sat for an hour and a half on bullying, on the law, on policy, and on protocol of mass general law, on what we have to do for schools, and that we're not going to make mistakes or not understand where our students coming from, from that day forward. And they asked for some, some templates, we got templates, we've got letters, we've got, and last year, we had known through our demographics and some data that we received that students with IEPs were being bullied or getting in trouble a lot, the junior senior high school, and at the Mitchell School. Jay Fallon and I got together, we started, we started talking about student issues on, on this and why this was going on, and why, why this was happening, and that's when we brought Murphy, Essie, Tumi, and Lahane in. So Alicia St. Floren now is looking at all of our reports at this time, looking at all of our investigations. The principal spoke to her for an hour and a half last week, they had a training during the summer, they had a training last week. They are instructed that if, if they're not sure on which way to go into, into a bullying situation or any incident that happens, if they're questioning themselves, assistant principal questions themselves, behavior specialist questions themselves, they're reporting to the principal, principal reports it to me, and we will let them talk to legal immediately. Kids deserve, are under invited attention when they come to us, and we can't cut corners with a child's social, emotional wellbeing. And unfortunately, we probably, we did, and we take it seriously. I take it very seriously. I'm doing everything I can to work with the principals, I'm, I'm giving them as much professional development as I can, and there is protocol in place. They should know it, they do know it, they will know it, and I hope that we don't see it again, so. But this plan will be looked over again by the principals, we'll continue to talk about it, and we'll bring it back to you because that was one of Desi's recommendations for us, is to do it biannually with you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Strategic Plan update for goal number two, which is strong instruction. So I have Mrs. Fisher, Technology Integration Facilitator, Mr. Tom Walsh, our Assistant Principal for the junior, senior high school, and Mr. Matt Paquette, the Principal of Mitchell School, who are part of my subcommittee for strong instruction. So I'll have them come up and join me. Just to give you an overview, I highlighted in your packets, all the, the action steps under this strategy is on the document I highlighted for you, the ones that we're focusing on this evening. Two major goals within our strategic plan under strong instruction is our curriculum review cycle, so this year it is math, so a lot of the work that we're doing with professional development is around math, as well as, I've talked to you quite a bit about our response to intervention and looking at how we have multi-tiered systems of support for students. So all students receive general education within the classroom, that's considered tier one. Tier two would be for what we would hope to be 20% or less of the students who may need some additional supports beyond the general curriculum supports, and then tier three supports. So we are working on revamping our child study process so that if a student is struggling in a classroom and is not finding success, and the teacher has used all the strategies that they know, resources that they're aware of, they have the ability to then go before a child study team, where that team will help them brainstorm and identify additional supports and interventions that a child may receive. This is really a way to provide supports to students who may just need that, and it's not an identification of special education, it's just more intense supports that they need in order for them to be successful. So I've highlighted some of the things that we're doing here under the math review. As I have mentioned to you, we were very fortunate to secure a high-quality instructional material grant. A lot of that credit goes to Gemic Partnallin, our curriculum facilitator, for securing that grant, which has provided us with $116,000 mainly for professional development. So we have very eager and energetic staff members who are interested in investing time outside of their contract day to do mini-grants around spiral reviews, which are sort of like assessments as students learn skills, curriculum mapping, making sure that they're covering all skills and topics that they need, also using the strategies that they've learned with inclusive practices so that they're incorporating those strategies in their teaching, so that all students are having access to their learning and breaking down any of those barriers that might be preventing them from learning, as well as we have some staff members interested in graduate courses, and they'll be taking those, and those will be covered by the grant as well. So what I'll do is I'll turn it over to Mrs. Fisher, and then we'll go to Mr. Paquette and Mr. Walsh, just so that they can tell you a little bit of a bird's eye view from their vantage point, certainly with Mrs. Fisher working across the district and supporting teachers as they integrate technology into their, not only their math curriculum, but also into how they support students through universal design for learning.
Hi, I'm Erin Fisher, I'm the Technology Integration Facilitator for the district, and thank you for having me, and it is my pleasure to work with our staff for, this is my eighth year in this position. We just brought 25 staff members to the Fall MasQ Conference that are all eager to learn about technology integration, and in my role, I help teachers break down barriers with their students in what ways we can best use the technology to do that. As we know, technology with this, generate, with our young crew can be very engaging, and many times I work particularly with the district, but with Central School with new tools, we look at what tools are available that we can use in small group and in limited time that can engage from a technology standpoint to build that math background, as well as all content background. In terms of across the district with our assistive technology plan, I work with teachers regularly, looking at our D cap and ways we can help all students achieve, not necessarily having to be identified, as Dr. Williams was saying, as a special education student. For instance, if we have students, if our firm goal is to find the percent of a number, we can bring in those tech tools, calculators, different math manipulatives, because our firm goal isn't facts practice, it is to find percent of a number. So we have a lot of conversation about using technology that's available to us to reach our firm goals in terms of instruction.
Great.
That's great, thank you. So hearing sort of the two overarching topics here, is the focus on math and our multi-tiered system of support, and they're really intertwined, and it's been validating to watch them evolve as the year goes on, especially since we're talking about strong instruction, and I know I've spoken about this in the past, but you know, in real time, strong instruction begins with, you know, the teachers developing their own professional practice goals and their student learning goals. And once again, I'm seeing many teachers using iReady. And once again, I'm seeing many teachers using iReady as a source for the development of those goals in both professional practice and student learning, creating routines through iReady, going, creating lesson plans through iReady, going ahead and using, of course, diagnostic data in their, in their goals to, and to figure out ways that they can push students to reach their stretch goals and their typical growth goals. And a lot of the refreshing and rewarding conversations come with what strategies are they implementing to ensure that students, individual students are going to reach those goals, and the teachers will reach their, reach their goals. But what I'm seeing a lot of this year, and I think it's to a teacher, they're taking that process of finding their own professional practice goals and their own student learning goals, and bringing students into the conversation and developing individual student goals based on what they see in their diagnostic results. And they're developing their own set of sort of professional practice and student learning goals on an individual level. And so they keep them documented, and they discuss what, what strategies they think will work, what should we do more of, what should we do less of in terms of strengths and weaknesses. It really elevates the academic conversation and the relationship between the student and the teacher. And then there, where you see, are they evolving and are not evolving fast enough, are they struggling here or not struggling there, you see then sort of the introduction of a lot of the accommodations that we have in our D cap. You'll see that take place in many different capacities. You'll see that, you see teachers, when you're making observations, change the setting, for instance, small groups, pairs, large groups, you'll see that change location. You'll see it in how they're delivering instruction. You'll see, are they using models? Are they repeating how they're presenting it? You also see the level of choice that they're allowing students to present their own responses. And it, and it's just to watch sort of the D cap accommodations manifest themselves into the classroom in response to those goals is really, again, like I said, validating. And should they run into further struggles with any individual student, we, of course, we move through the system involving more inclusive practices, and certainly, if need be, child study groups. So it's been, it's been pleasing and validating to see it all kind of evolving even this early in the year.
Great. Mr. Walsh?
Hello, everybody. My name is Mr. Walsh, Tom Walsh. I'm the Assistant Principal at the high school, junior, senior high school. I usually answer, and if you have asked any questions of me, I have two answers. Number one, I'm new here. And number two, that's a great question for the building principal. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm excited to get to see everybody face to face and speak. Bill, Mr. Silver and I have started doing our observations. We've got 45 observations done already since October 1. Been able to get out into the classroom and see some really good instruction. Couple of new math hires that are doing some really wonderful things. Observed a college prep geometry class, and to see what she was doing with the students was actually just really refreshing, to see the rigor and the students engaged and infusing technology was good to see. I went and observed Mrs. O'Hay, an eighth grade teacher. She was doing an intervention block. Our eighth graders have intervention either two or three times a week, and during this intervention block, the students have a personalized instruction summary that is printed from iReady. And it identifies all of the strands that the students need to work on. It identifies where they're at in terms of readiness, could be early fifth grade, middle seventh grade. And eighth grade teachers have made a conscious effort to have every student pass two of those a week until January, and then the kids will be, get another diagnostic and get another plan. When I walked in, each student had their plan in front of them, and they were all working on the strands that they needed to improve on, which I thought was really a good use of the intervention block. So it was nice to see that.
Great. Thank you. So we just sort of wanted to share with you, certainly for instruction to be strong, we need teachers who have the professional development and have the support for them to be able to work with students in the classroom, given the varied needs of the students. And then working on a process so that if students aren't finding success, we have a way for teachers to get that additional support that they can provide for their students. So one of the things that you'll see evolve over the course of the year, and when we come back as a group, we'll be sharing with you what it looks like for our district as far as tier one. What types of supports do we have for students in that tier one? What do we use for resources within tier one? And then what does it look like tier two for those students who aren't finding success with our general classroom curriculum and resources? But maybe Mrs. Fisher now has stepped in, provided some supports in professional development for staff, so now we have a little bit more intense support for those students that need it, and then tier three. So we'll make sure that by the end of the year, you can see that overview to know what we're providing at each of the tiers. And what's great is when the, the group that talks about assessment and monitoring student progress, that should be the fruits of our labor reflected in that part of our strategic plan. Certainly, the grant money has helped. One last thing at your, at your seat. This year is not science for curriculum review, but next year is. But this was a huge help for us. Massachusetts Science Center had a grant opportunity. It was open to colleges, universities, as well as public schools. It was publicly announced by Governor Healy just last week, and I had to highlight for you, East Bridgewater was the recipient of the highest award of all public schools in Massachusetts at $179,973. You will see microscopically, use a science term, this is everything we purchased. So it's a combination of equipment, materials, supplies, as well as professional development. It was for specifically middle school and high school, so that's why you'll see, if you can read it, all the equipment, materials, and supplies are for grades six through 12, as well as the professional development.
Why did we get so much?
That's what we asked for. So we were able to articulate the need. One of the things that we realized is moving into this new school building, which is over 10 years old, a lot of the equipment came with us. We did obviously have allowance to purchase some, but since then, nothing has been updated. Maintenance has not been done, so a lot of our equipment was antiquated. We asked, and we were awarded. And I think Mr. Shea has said this in the past, you know, a lot of times, we just take advantage of people not putting in the effort to write the grant, and then we become the recipient. I would like to think it's because we write such a compelling grant, but sometimes it is just if you're willing to put the work in, you'll get the results.
And this stuff's expensive.
I think it's incredible that, how, how much time did you say between when it came out versus when you asked for it?
So this one, we had a little bit of a time, a little bit of time. We were actually able to put Google Sheets out to staff. Mr. Silver, who was the lead at the time for the science department, was able to help. So we did have a little bit more time, but sometimes, most often time, the turnaround time is relatively quick.
Because I know everybody can't see this, but the amount of, the level of detail in here for what was pulled together and the prices that were pulled together to produce what was asked for is incredible. So kudos to that work.
Definitely a joint effort.
That's a full-time job in itself.
Any questions for us on strategic plan?
I would think, first of all, great job. Thank you very much for working together to go after these funds and, I mean, kudos to all involved. So that's, East Bridgewater getting the most money is fantastic, and I look forward to us getting even more money, right, John? So keep writing those grants, and thank you very much. Dr. Williams, you spoke earlier on about the certain tiers and the support. Is there, is there consideration or opportunity for students who are in maybe that tier one and that are accelerating to get additional support? Is that certain things that the data pulls through that we can see?
Sure. I'll just mention it, and then I'll let Mrs. Fisher speak. So with the diagnostics, it will also give us that information as well. So if we know students have already learned skills that would be typical for that grade level, then certainly we know what skills they are then ready to learn. And so part of the inclusive practices training that we're doing with staff is about small group instruction, so we can make sure that we can meet students where they're at, whether it's they need reinforcement, or whether it's they're ready to go on.
That was exactly what I was going to say.
Oh, sorry.
I was going to say, in inclusive practice, we...
Yep.
Fantastic.
We dive into the data, and we look at where students are.
And I will say, you know, it is uncomfortable for teachers to have students in small group and to feel confident that they're being productive in small groups while they can be working with a small group of students, looking for them to be working independently. And what's great are coaches for inclusive practices, Mrs. Fisher being one of them, have had teachers now who have been doing this for a few years actually present to the staff, some of them even presented at MasQ, about how successful it can be for students to still be learning while working independently, while teachers are working with small group. And that's middle school even. You know, I think a lot of times you'll think, ah, too dangerous, can't leave them on their own. But certainly, if it's all planned out and set up appropriately, then that gives you time to work both ends.
I think their focus too now is more on student growth and not just covering my standards for the year. We have students that come ready to learn and have already excelled on certain standards and are ready to do more, and teachers are more focused, I think, now as we've evolved on student growth of every student.
And that's what parents should look for. When they look at their iReady diagnostics for their students, they should look at their growth as opposed to their achievement.
You hear that, parents at home?
Yeah.
Look for growth.
Anything else?
Good.
We're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you.
All right. I handed out tonight about 12 pages I'd like to run through of financial analysis. The first five pages, five, six, seven, eight pages, pages are related to the end-of-year Hopefully, we'll be filing that report tomorrow, meeting with the town administrator and town accountant to have them sign off on it. I met with Lauren and Liz today to review the report. This first page here is my expense reconciliation. This is what I present to the town. It hopefully proves to them that I've included all expenses that I should have. The first line is the total expenditures, all funds. That line is right out of the end-of-year report, and I think it's a good breakdown for, for you guys. It, it shows where we spent all the funds, 40, almost $41 million in funds for the school. Now, the, the school, column one, the school committee appropriations, that's what we, that's the budget. That's what we have voted on at town meeting. So we spent $23,611,000 out of our allocated budget. Then you have all these other columns. You have the city-town appropriations. Those are the expenses that the town allocates to the schools. There's 12.5 million. That's electricity, health insurance, pension, dental insurance. And I've included a summary in there for your, for your review, if you'd like to see it all. Column three is what we spent out of federal grants. Column four is state grants. Then you have what we spent out of circuit break of $412,000. We have a couple of small private grants and donations, school choice and other tuitions. That's, we spent 400, almost $410,000 out of, out of that category. That's preschool and also what we spent out of school choice. Other local receipts is athletic fund. That shows you, we spent out of our athletic revolving account, the fees we received, we spent $190,000 on athletics. So not only do we have an athletic budget, right, in that first column, we also are spending funds on athletics out of our revolving fund. Other local receipts, that's, that's a catch-all of a lot of different categories like the drama clubs, bussing, after-school, building rental. So we actually spent $862,000 out of that category. So I just, I want to get the point across that everyone says, well, spending $25 million a year. I mean, there's a lot more to it that we're spending on the, on the kids. Page two and three, that is a little more detail on that $40,900,000. In the end-of-year report, I need to break it down by a lot of different categories. You can see all those categories as rows. So every, every source is broken down in the end-of-year report by all these different And I know it's a lot of detail I'm throwing at you, but if you have any questions after the meeting, I'm happy to review with you.
John, the school committee, the $12,000, might do a check? No, about? I just thought it was unpaid. No, I'm just, but is that, is that like lawyer?
For meetings, dues, conferences.
So no check, though?
No check. Cookies and water.
I take the cookies, so.
Pages four and five are my revenue reconciliations.
John, will you go any further, Mr. Shea? Just a quick question. Do you put this into some form of like pie chart or something where we could see visually how the funds are going? So like when we look at something like total instructional at 18,251 on page two, sorry. Like, I, I think maybe, at least for me, it might be beneficial if I, the detail is phenomenal, and that's the supportive side of it. But I think to help tell the story a little bit easier sometimes, if we could get that in, you know, a pie chart or something like that to say, hey, here's where this amount of the funds are going. I don't know if that's possible, but...
So it is. So what happens when I submit this report to the state? We contract with a company called ClearGov, which is on our website. So ClearGov actually will take all the information that I download, download to the state. They'll get it from the state, and they will put it in pie charts. I mean, what they do is a pretty, is a great job. And it's on our website. Fiscal year '23, like on our website now is fiscal year '22, but fiscal year '23 usually takes them a month after I submit the report for them to add it to our website.
Perfect.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, they do a great job breaking down, and they do comparisons to other school districts.
And it's public, right? I feel like I've gone on the site before. I use that site. Before I go into a district to do a talk, I go on to that site and another, another site to get information about the district that I fly. It's very user-friendly in terms of that. You want to do well?
No, I'm chewing a mint, and that's why I'm chugging coffee. So.
Thank you.
It's very user-friendly.
Four and five, I've included pages four and five for you. I mean, it's the reconciliation of the revenue from the revolving funds and the reconciliation of revenue from the grants. It shows you a breakdown of all the revenue we received from the different grants on Page six, seven, and eight, when I was talking about column two, the city-town appropriations, this is a summary of all the expenses that aren't in our budget, that are in the town's budget that are allocated to us. budget that are allocated to us. You can see, you know, electricity, workers' comp insurance, all the different insurances. Principal and interest on all school-related bond, bondings, health insurance.
How come some have no numbers? Just because no money was spent on that particular thing in 2023?
Yeah, like 2023, so you're probably looking at maybe page six.
Oh, yes, sorry, page six under the 301.
Articles, yeah. So, I just, because this is continuous over the years, these, these are certain different articles over the years that may have had, we may have received funding in fiscal year 2019.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and these are for items in the special town meeting and the annual town meeting where they, we asked for money for the central school fire lane and they allocated $46,000 to us. That was paid out of a reserve fund, I believe. If it was bonded, I wouldn't include it here, so.
Thank you.
Good. Page nine is my usual summary. You can see non-salary, as of today, our available balance of 1.3 million. Last year at this time, we had an available balance of 1.2 million, trending about the same as we were last year. I have taken a look at all the line items. I think we're a little concerned right now of our homeless transportation line item, but I still need to dig into that before I provide you additional information. But that seems way over budget. Salary. I mentioned something at last meeting. I was talking about Brockton and how, you know, they had a $14 million problem and a lot of it was salary-related. And I started thinking to myself, how could that happen? How could the school committee not know? And then I look at what we do here and I give you one line item and I tell you everything's great. So, you're putting a lot of trust in me, but I don't think that's fair. I need to provide you some better information, which is what I attempted to do in an easy manner for me to do. A high-level analysis. I can walk you briefly through it and if you, if you like it and you want me to continue to do it, I will continue to do it. Doesn't take me a lot of time to do it compared to the 50-page model that I have. But I just want you to understand that this doesn't answer all the questions. It's a high-level summary to hopefully make you guys feel comfortable that you are getting the information you need to look at our salary budget.
We will make sure Gordon reviews that and reports back.
Can I ask you a question on this? I don't know, are you going to talk about?
I'm going to talk about.
Oh, okay. I'll wait.
So, column M, and it says column M because A through L is hidden, all right? Every week, every bi-weekly payroll is listed. Column M is payroll period eight. We have, we have 26 payroll periods. Column N is a summary, year-to-date of all those payroll periods. So, let's, let's pick a line. Let's pick 1-300-109, central school substitutes. In period eight, which was October 11th, we paid out $1,945. The summary year-to-date is $4,270 of all payroll periods, one through eight. I know we're going to have 18 more payroll periods. So, what I do to estimate the remainder of the year, I take the October 11th payroll and multiply it by 18. It's a simple way to project out the remainder of the year. Because if, if you look at the detail, you know, like your classroom teachers pretty much stays the same every, every, every week. It varies a little if someone leaves and you hire somebody, but I think by doing it this way and doing it this way for every, every line item, it's going to, it's going to make you, hopefully, get you comfortable with the fact that we're on line with the budget rather than just relying on me. So, what I do, I take the, for that line, 109, the substitutes, I take the 18 payrolls, multiply by the one week, and I estimate that we have $35,000 of salary expense. We're going to have $35,000 of salary expense for the year. Totalling 39,000. So, 35 for the rest of the year. We already have incurred 4,000, so we're going to, I'm estimating 39,000 at the end of the year. Right now, we've got a budget of 67,000. So, for that line is projecting by the end of the year to be under-budget by 28,000. But I, but I know that we've had a pretty good couple of weeks with substitutes. And it may not end up at 28,000, but I, I can feel comfortable with that line item saying, okay, we look pretty good there, ourselves.
And just to reiterate kind of what you're saying, I think it's important that we look at this with a grain of salt, knowing, like, I mean, the stomach bug could rip through central school and we end up spending more money than we expected on substitutes. You know what I mean? So, these, these are based on, if every week looked the same as it did last, you know what I mean? And every week, every week doesn't look the same. So, it's based on certain assumptions that could definitely change over time.
And as we get into the year, rather than using just the last payroll period for departments like that, I may use an average.
Yep, yep.
How do you come up with R? Like for that, for that particular line, you have a R budget of 67,500.
That's our budget.
No, but like, how did you come up with that number?
Oh, well, during the budget process, it's, so the budget is based upon, like, the salary budget is based upon the staff members and their scales moving. That's how we do the salary budget. For the substitute line, I'll take a look at historical performance. Like, last year, we had a really high substitute expense. The 67,000 was actually an increase over what we had the prior year, which was, I think, 50,000. So, it's, it's based upon experience.
I still don't know if you looked at it and said, we have 200 teachers and they, we make this much per day and then it's this many sick days they get per year and it could be this high number or if it's based on like cycles, averages, things like that. I figure that number would be huge that I just presented, which hopefully we don't make use of.
So. John, how do you, how do you take a look at when you see certain numbers that might be outliers? And when I take a look at line 1-300-123, what you have budgeted versus what's there? How does this forecast it to get it back in line, right?
Right.
Is that showing a pretty big variance?
Right. So, that line is coaches pay and they get paid four times a year. So, they haven't gotten paid yet. So, that's why it's showing up as significantly under-budget. So, there's, there's a story to every, every line. And as we, you know, as we get along into the year, I can try to improve, improve on estimates.
Yep.
But I thought for this first draft, I'm not going to make any changes to it. It's just, it is what it is. And if you, if you like it, I am happy to keep doing it. If you don't like it, that's all.
I think we need this level of detail, given what other districts have recently gone through. So, I think it would be irresponsible for us not to have this information available to us. And I think this format's fantastic.
I'd like you to have a pie chart.
No, I, I think, given that budget is one of our top three, one of our three main responsibilities, I think it's important to get. As tedious as it seems and as deer in headlights as some of us get at times, I think it's important for us to at least have a chance to look this over and, and see what, what's happening aside from, like you said, the umbrella look at it that we get typically. I think it's good. Thank you for doing this.
The last item is a summary of our revolving funds. Not, not much has changed. You see, school building rental has, has gone down. We've rarely been using that fund, putting, putting it to use in the building.
John, when you say school building rental has gone down, my brain is struggling.
Yes.
That's a good thing or not?
Well.
When it comes to the revolving funds accounting?
I mean, it's, is it a good, that's a tough question to answer. You like to have a lot.
Yeah.
In revolving, but if you don't have a lot and you're putting it to good use, I mean, I mean, we used it for new speakers on the, on the football field.
Yep.
And those speakers sound great, you know? So, we're not, we're putting it to good use.
Gotcha. Okay.
I have a question.
But you like, sorry, Ella, but you like to have enough in reserve to cover an emergency.
Okay. So, when it's down?
That means we've spent money on things to.
Gotcha. Okay. Invested.
Yes.
Instead of, we've invested.
Good, good word.
Thank you. I'm really aiming to be your assistant.
You mean to be what?
Assistant. I'm just kidding, because when I talk budget, I act like I know what I'm doing.
Sorry.
So, this is, a parent had brought to my attention, this was a few weeks back, about, you know how we, at the end of the year, the sports uniforms, or maybe at the end of each season or whatever, the sports uniforms go out and get cleaned? Well, someone had mentioned about the marching bands' uniforms that the parents, I guess, have to pay or, I don't know, I guess they don't, we don't pay fully or something. I don't know the whole story, but I don't think our marching band's that big, but is it possible to have the marching band uniforms cleaned too?
I believe this came up last year and I believe I said that we don't want parents having to pay for.
Oh, I guess they're still paying.
If they are still.
I don't know the full story. It's just what someone said to me this year. So, I don't know.
Marching band has a player, has a user fee, right? Is it the same as an athletic fee?
They do. They have a user fee. Yeah, I, I can try to find out the details of it.
I don't know, I just figured I'd bring it up to talking about the revolving account.
Sure, I'll, I'll look into it.
Anything else?
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Thank you. Public comment? Is anybody here for public comment? Have you signed in?
I didn't.
Okay.
So, I was here last year and I'm probably a little worried. I am here for my older son and I didn't know I was speaking tonight, but you were talking about the bullying incident. So, he has an age right over here.
Could you, just for the record, could you just state your name for it?
My name's Erica. My son's name is Eric. He is down with serious concerns right now. And you mentioned that something goes to Dusty maybe about that and that you are notified that I'm not aware. I wasn't aware, I wasn't told anything about that. So, I kind of want to make sure. He's, this is three different boys. A monkey in the hallway and they're in the bathroom. Another boy keeps brushing his hair. He tells him not to touch his hair and then he makes glitter noises. So, this is, this is happening in the past two months. My son is very, he's a big kid and he's very quiet and he's very passive. It's just happening frequently. I don't understand what's happening, what's going on. I'm going to have to school, so I can follow.
Spoke with the woman from Student Affairs, Kristy, I believe. They spoke to the students, they're calling the parents, but I just don't know if enough is being done. I'm afraid that my son, because he's very quiet, he doesn't usually come home and say he has problems, I don't want him to explode one day. But it's getting to that point where I have no problem telling him, punch him in the face. But I don't want him to do that because he's the one that will get in trouble. You know, I don't, so I just didn't know if you were aware of that. Okay. Because this is, that's serious. And I don't even know if, under the, you were talking about the bullying, that's why I didn't expect, I didn't even think I would speak tonight, but you were talking about the bullying incident and revamping or changing the wording. I don't know if this falls under bullying or this is like, I feel like this is beyond. This is, so I don't, I just wanted to make you aware of that. My next step was I was planning on writing an email, just kind of like minutes of everything that I've spoken to and CCing you on it. But now I'm letting you know face-to-face that this is happening, this is an issue and I'm just, I hope something's going to be done about it because we, this is our third year here in East Bridgewater. We came from Brockton. Like I said last year, I've always loved Bridgewater, East Bridgewater. I grew up going to a home daycare here. And my son has been thriving since we moved here. I don't feel, he's, he's asking me, do I need to leave this school? And I said, do you want to leave the school? And he said, I don't want to, but I feel like I might have to because I don't know why this is happening and I don't want that. So, I just hope, I just wanted to make you aware of it and I'm hoping something will be done. Thank you.
Thank you. That's unacceptable.
We are going to move on to action items. Our first action item, at the last meeting, we mentioned the creation of a school committee diversity, equity, and inclusion subcommittee. And so, now, action is required by the school committee on the creation of a school committee DEI subcommittee. Do I have a motion?
So.
Moved by Ellen.
Second.
Second by Becky. Is there any discussion?
I would just, are we, are we narrowing these things too much and then we'll have subcommittee stacked upon subcommittee stacked upon subcommittee? So, I would wonder if this, if this initiative could be placed under maybe a bigger umbrella, something like student engagement, whereas instead of just having a subcommittee that is for one particular thing, it could capture all of those, I mean, obviously, this is something that is, we want to pursue and so forth. I just wonder if we have a subcommittee for this. It turns into like John's empty line items on a budget later on.
Right.
Whereas I would hope, whatever our subcommittees are, it's inclusive of everything.
We want to be careful about not, not micromanaging also.
Well, so what, I believe the purpose of bringing this subcommittee up was to help the district move forward with the audit that we are trying to make happen and implementing any, any recommendations that come out of that audit. So, there is a specific purpose to this subcommittee. I, I appreciate the sentiment of what you're saying. I totally get what you're saying.
Right.
But where this subcommittee would have a narrow focus as, like, on purpose. But where this Subcommittee would have a narrow focus, as, like, on purpose, I think this would still be okay, under the circumstances, but I think it's definitely worth kind of taking a look. Do our Subcommittee's, do our Subcommittee's have charges?
Well, a few Subcommittee, you mean charges as in what we're supposed to be doing? Yes, for the ones that we have.
Okay, so that would be something we should develop too.
Like policy is updating policy.
So we should, side project, take a look at our Subcommittee's and, it might be that we could redesign some of the charges of the Subcommittee's that exist, and kind of try to involve things in differently. Gordon, you had something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest, if you can hear me, that perhaps instead of a whole Subcommittee, perhaps we just designate somebody to be our liaison with the school, or the DEI group, or whatever, to represent the School Committee on that, and then report back to the overall School Committee.
So previously, we did have a liaison to the Community Coalition for Change. Did we appoint one previous, at our?
I think Liz said something about she attends those meetings and maybe.
She does, but I think.
I don't think we have one now.
We have had a, yeah, Amanda used to go.
We talked about it.
And whenever she couldn't go, she would get a backup. I do, it was an official liaison position, and I, we did our alignment so long ago, I don't remember if we did that or not. So that is something to consider.
It's not listed on this.
It's not?
No.
Okay.
I know we all kind of leave some of times, of course, we leave the conversations with our own understanding of something. And the way that I left the DEI Subcommittee understanding was that ultimately, a result of an audit could result in policy. So it stays in our purview, is how I was thinking that it was relevant to, to what we as School Committee members actually have, say, over. Yeah, oversight over, right? Because if a Subcommittee is then going into something that is going to involve the three things we have purview over, it makes sense to me. And I, I had made sense of it in my mind, that it was relevant, because policy might come out of this.
Well, and budget expenditure.
Exactly, right, so.
We'd need money to spend.
Yeah, I don't know how that ends up connecting to what you said, but you.
Yeah, I think I was just trying to get some overarching Subcommittee's where these types of initiatives would fall under those ones, as opposed to having.
Another little mini one.
Another little mini group. Because it almost feels like those mini groups tend to not have purview or visibility over all the other things that we're responsible for.
Maybe it could be like, if we had one person as the DEI person up, you know, from the committee, they could bring things, if they had something to bring to the Policy Subcommittee, they could do that. Or if they had to bring something to the Budget Subcommittee, they could do that too.
And I think Ellen's point, whether it's a, you know, whether it's a DEI person or a student engagement person, which all those things would then follow up to, whereas like Gordon's kind of a de facto, kind of obviously on the finance side of things. So I'm just trying to have discussion as to, we can get, streamlining the process for all, so we can get to where we want to get to, maybe in a more clearer path. But I don't want this to be held up because of that, obviously.
No, I'm thinking, because I would hope that, once we have an audit done and have recommendations that come out of that process, I expect there to be a lot of work to do. Some of it would be based on student engagement, some of it could be based on professional development, some of it could be based on anything, really, policy, budget, the trust of. So, I'm just not sure. So I guess what we could do, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, these types of things touch upon so many other things. To have it be in a silo all by itself, I don't know if we're doing that initiative the justice that it deserves.
So why don't we?
We should do some research on it.
Yeah, I was going to say, why don't we reach out to some other School Committees, or do some research.
Reach out to MASC.
See how other School Committees are handling this. Reach out to MASC, see how they're handling it, and we can come back to this.
Yeah, I was on Desi's website earlier today to try to get a feel, because I knew we were going to be talking about this. And they haven't made any updates to their part of it since like November of 2020. So going somewhere to find guidance, that's exactly what I think, you know, we're looking for, is that guidance.
And MASC might have some resources for it too. So why don't we decide, Gordon, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, no, thank you.
Do we want to table this motion for now?
And bring it back to the next.
And bring it back to the next meeting, after we've done some research and outreach and whatnot? Do we have to vote on whether or not to table it? Do I have to?
Motion to table.
We have a motion.
Well, did we, we have the motion to, motion to, we already motioned and seconded, right? And then we had discussion.
On the specific action item.
So then, we, motion to table. Say table it.
Are you moving to table it?
Yes.
So Ellen has moved to table? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. All in favor? Gordon?
Aye.
All star, aye.
Walker, aye.
Pennington, aye.
Fidler, aye.
Gloria, aye.
The business meeting calendar, there is not an enclosure in this, right, Mike? Per our discussion earlier. So Mike and I have been kind of talking about reimagining the whole design of that, so that it's more, it's easier to understand, because it was born as one type of calendar, and now we are kind of morphing it into a different kind of calendar. So we're going to kind of redesign it all together. So we are going to skip over this action item for tonight, and he and I, and probably Gordon, because Gordon, you had some pretty heavy feedback on that too. So we will kind of work with Mike to get that ready to present at our next meeting.
Action is required by School Committee on Superintendent's Evaluation. Do I have a motion? So moved.
Moved by Ellen.
Second.
Second by Scott, discussion?
Um, yeah, my discussion is, so I received recently, I received some questions, and I am not prepared to answer them. And so if, if people, we can either table it till the next meeting, or we could vote on it, whatever, everybody wants to do, if you want to wait, and I'll come back. But based on the questions that I got, I think. God, it's so quiet. Who was listening? I never had the floor this quiet before. Based on the questions, I think maybe there's, there's maybe a little training, I don't know how to be delicate. Maybe there's a little training involved or something, I don't know. I did forward them to Gordon, to see if, I don't know if he had any comments or anything about it.
So I'm going to out myself, I was one of the people with questions.
Yeah, see, I don't out anybody.
I know, but I'm just putting it out there, I was one of the people with questions. So you forwarded them to Gordon?
Yes, because he's so, because he's been on the committee for a long time, and maybe he had some good input or something, I don't know.
Okay, because I know my questions weren't all that different from the questions I had the last time. So I wonder if it might be helpful for me to talk to either you or Gordon, only because I can't speak for anybody else who had any questions or feedback, and kind of try to figure this out. Because if I'm one of the few that has questions and concerns, I feel like I should maybe invest some time in trying to fix them with you guys. Does that sound fair?
Yeah. Gordon, can you hear us?
Well, can you, can you take advantage now while we're all together, or sort of all together? Anyone else, you know, just open it up to any other, I don't want to keep doing this and then coming back and finding another question or not. So why don't you make sure that every, if anyone else has any comments or questions, that we make sure we have them all on the table, so we can address them.
I also had questions, I felt like they were pretty much just clarifying questions. I wasn't, I wasn't, certainly I was vocal last time about them not aligning in a SMART goal format. It was, they're more clarifying, a simple understanding of, is this what I'm assessing or not? One of my primary concerns in some of the wording of them is that they, I want to make sure that the wording of the goal is one that Liz can successfully meet, or try to work to meet. And some of the wording in them leaves me confused about, you know, one of them is, the word deliver is used in the school project. It's worded that it will, by the time it's assessed in 2025, basically, we will be assessing if Liz proficiently did something or not, that she has delivered on the outcome of the MSBA projects. You have the same one. And my question simply is, can a building be built or redone by 2025? Because that is out of Liz's control, Liz is not going to build the building.
I mean, if that building went up by 2025, that would be the fastest project.
Right, so that's, so my concerns on the wording is things like, I don't want to cosign signing up for Liz to have a goal written that is not possible for her to complete. If there cannot be a building delivered in 2025, that shouldn't be the word in the goal, because I'm not going to mark Liz as proficient if there is not a new central school building or refurbished building standing in 2025, based on the way the goal is currently written. So my questions.
What's that?
Are largely clarifying.
Yeah, could you send me that, because I don't see 2025.
So I'm taking.
It's a cycle.
Because it's a cycle.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So the review cycle being 2020, puts us at 2025.
My cycle, okay.
You know, so, so for that one, it's clarifying, if a DEI audit is completed by 2024, if that's the goal, the way it is written, and the review cycle ends in 2025, what is the second half of the cycle you're evaluating for Liz? Because if after 2000, fall 2024, what are we continuing to look at with that? So these questions, I don't feel are overly complicated, or picking at detail in any kind of way. It's if we're going to measure Liz, the SMART goal format, which I don't think requires any further training, the SMART goal format is quite clear. So if the goals are not written in SMART goal way, and they are not written in a way that Liz can actually attempt to accomplish, then that's a problem.
Right, and my frustration comes from a place, and it comes from the experience we had last year, when I was on the Evaluation Subcommittee last year, where we had written goals. We took time to write the goals in detail, and in as SMART form as we could get them. We all had the same evidence from Liz, and we still individually came up with vastly different outcomes. And I really feel like we should work to avoid that. We need to make things more objective, because I shouldn't get this set of evidence, and Scott gets this set of evidence, and we both come to widely different conclusions. It should be close, doesn't necessarily have to be the same conclusion, but it should be closer than what we experienced last year. So that's kind of where I'm coming at all of this. So. Aside from what I did send to Ellen.
So how do we have more discussion about this?
Well, do you have any additional feedback on these? Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, I mean, personal opinion, I hate this entire thing. I don't like the way it's structured, I don't think it's very readable. I've always thought that Magnus does nothing for Liz.
Right.
For the Superintendent to actually achieve a goal, if it's kind of like, everything's very vague. I think it's impossible for someone to be judged on how they're doing in a job, when the goal aligns either being moved, or reduced, or extended out. I don't know. It's just, and I agree, because every year we do this, we do the evaluation, and we have the same question, and wildly different answers. So I, of course, wonder, everybody who didn't agree with me is so wrong, because that's how I think. But, so I don't know, I don't know how we continue this up.
Right, I just, I want it, I want it, like, I feel like this has gone on for so long already, and it's starting to not be fair, because.
We moved goalposts.
Right, we moved the goalposts, we, we, I want there to be. Can we have a workshop?
I got to be honest, Ellen, I don't want to do a workshop.
Or can we just have a meeting, can we post an open meeting to go, I don't, I don't know how to do this. I don't think we need Dorothy Presser to come down and teach us how to write goals. I do think we maybe need to get together in a situation where we would need to post an open meeting, and, like, specifically for hammering this out, because there's, we're not even close to having consensus on this. And it's already been, what, two months on this?
I think the workshops lead to this being convoluted. That's just my opinion. And I think that if we just sat down and looked at and said, here's the goals, here's what we think, the alignments, the key actions, benchmark, I'm okay with that, I just, I read this and I go, you know, compared to MCAS growth of the individual and class cohort and state and cohort data, like, that's the benchmark. Okay, but, I don't know, I feel like we don't have all the data to accurately make decisions sometimes with these things. We get it in the spring, and we all scramble to get it written, and so much of it's just our opinion.
Right, and we've put so much work into this, Liz puts a lot of work into it. I just don't want it to be a waste of work and time, because we didn't set it up correctly in the first place.
I think one of the things to keep in mind is that, if, think of Liz or Liz's position as a CEO, and it's very difficult, not impossible, but difficult to come up with goals. She's in charge of everything. I know there was some concerns about, well, if we're going to do professional development, well, that's, that's not Liz's direct purview, but she's got the overall of every department ultimately answers to her. So that's why it makes it a little bit more difficult to really come up with very specific, we want you to do X, we want you to do Y, you really got to, I think, anyway, you really got to think more in broader terms of what, of what you want her or us to accomplish as a district. It isn't that Liz gets out the tools, and for instance, builds the school, or runs, you know, teaches the, runs the PD shops, or whatever. She's, she's in charge of everything, so that's what makes it, I think, more difficult than just a specific employee, this is your job responsibility, and here's how we're going to judge whether you're doing it well or not. And I do think, I like the, there's been a couple of comments that, hey, we just want Liz and the district to get better. I think that's the right, I think that's the right mindset, that, hey, where can we show improvement? Where, where, and to me, anyway, one of those big things was MCAS. I'd like to see much more focus on MCAS, so that was one, to produce improvement. But again, with MCAS, there's so many components to it, you just want to say, okay, we need to step back and say, okay, did we improve year over year, two years over two years, whatever it may be? And that's all, so, that's all I want to, we're going to get through this one way or the other. So I think perhaps what we do is, like you said, Lauren, just have an open meeting, and let's, let's sit and make sure we cover everybody's concerns, and finalize it.
Is that what we want to do? I mean, I know we're all insanely busy, but we got to hash this out once and for all and be done with it.
Yeah, the amount of time that we're not producing these goals for Liz makes me feel anxious.
Well, and it's not fair, because we just adjusted the timeline so that we would have this done before the committee turns over in May, and now here we are, October, and it's, I know it's a mid-cycle review, but. So why don't we, we can work to find the time. so why don't we, uh, we can work to find a time that's mutually agreeable for all of us and just hash it out. That'll be the only thing on the agenda. Hash it out and be done with it sooner rather than later to, so that we can be done. Maybe we can even vote on those goals at the meeting.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
So we have a motion on the table. A motion to table now and come back at a later date? Is that a motion?
So moved.
Seconded?
Seconded.
By Becky. All in favor? McKinnon?
Aye.
Foster, aye.
Walker, aye.
Pennington, aye.
Fidler, aye.
Furia, aye.
Action is required by the school committee on the MASCE's 2023 resolutions. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Scott.
Second.
Second by Ellen.
Becky.
Becky? Um, is there any discussion? Gordon, do you wanna say anything? Or, I mean, we have the resolutions, we had a chance to review them, how do you wanna do this?
Well, I can, I can, I went through the, uh, they had a training, uh, session on them, just to kinda give you the background, I can kinda give you the top level on them. Some of them are pretty straightforward and some of them may create some discussion. For instance, the
Hold on, Gordon, before you give, hold on. Does anybody have any questions after reviewing it that we need to discuss? Cuz we saw it last week, we took it home to look at it and, does anybody have any questions or can we say, can we vote?
I'm looking at my questions. I'm not questions, my thoughts, to see if there was a question or if I was just saying why it was I said yes or no.
And I don't wanna cut you off, Gordon, just if we don't need to have a discussion and we can vote, then
Yeah, that's fine. Like, like I mentioned before, well, all I, all I need is some direction so that when I sit in that meeting, I can, I, I know where we're starting from. We say yay to this one, not to, no to this one, yes to this one, no to that one. Um, and then as discussion ensues and something changes, I'll have to adjust accordingly, but that's all I'm looking for, is you guys to say, yes, we like resolution, uh, two, but we don't like one, we would vote yay for this and no for that, that kinda thing.
I had a question regarding the number four with the DEI coordinator, and because that would ultimately become, um, a budget issue for districts. And, um, I couldn't find it in there. And Gordon, I don't know if you have any sort of insight into this about with, if a DEI coordinator becomes something expected of every district, is there, do you know if there's any sort of, um, reimbursement or funding provided to help support that? I'm guessing the answer's no, but wanted to ask out loud, is there anything that would, that districts would receive to support that becoming a new position in the district?
I, I did not hear of any funding attached to it. I don't know, Liz probably has more info than I do.
No, I, but the funding would come from our goals and our mission from the district. We feel it's important, then we would put it in our budget and we would move forward with the DEI. I think, I think it's important and I think that's why they're trying to get it up there and in front.
Any other questions? So do we go through each of these individually? Yes?
And do our roll call, you mean?
Yeah, we're gonna have to do a roll call. And there are a total
Yeah, there weren't that many this year.
The smallest, the short list. Do I need to read them or can we just say resolution and the title of that?
Resolution.
New resolution and the title? Thank you.
Does not apply is an option, right? So like, resolution one, I think was, does not apply.
Well, even if it doesn't apply, they still, so MASCE looks for other districts, even if you're not a MECO district or a regional district, they look for us, the other districts, to still support them.
But also, these are not, just so everybody's on the same page, these are non-binding. This just tells MASCE
Right.
whether we support these certain initiatives or not, so
Right.
Um, so I'm gonna start, so we've had all of the discussion. I'm not gonna ask for further discussion. Okay. All in favor of supporting MASCE resolution one, full and stable funding for MECO? Gordon?
McKinnon, aye.
Foster, aye.
Walker, aye.
Pennington, aye.
Fidler, aye.
Furia, aye.
Resolution two, regarding investigations and recommendations for transportation bidding procedures. McKinnon?
Aye.
Foster, aye.
Walker, aye.
Pennington, aye.
Fidler, aye.
Furia, aye.
Um, as an aside, are these publicly available anywhere?
Uh, probably on the MAS
MASCE website?
Yes.
Just for anybody who's wondering what we're voting on right now. Um, resolution three, regional transportation. McKinnon?
Aye.
Foster, aye.
Walker, aye.
Pennington, aye.
Fidler, aye.
Furia, aye.
Resolution four, diversity, equity and inclusion. McKinnon?
Aye.
Foster, aye.
Walker, aye.
Pennington, aye.
Fidler, aye.
Furia, aye.
Resolution five, mass school building authority. McKinnon?
Aye.
Foster, aye.
Walker, aye.
Pennington, aye.
Fidler, aye.
Furia, aye.
Resolution six, school bus stop armed surveillance act and enforcement and penalties. McKinnon?
Aye.
Foster, aye.
Walker, aye.
Pennington, aye.
Fidler, aye.
Furia, aye.
Uh, resolution seven, related to MCAS. McKinnon?
Aye.
Foster, aye.
Walker, aye.
Pennington, aye.
Fidler, aye.
Furia, nay.
Uh, resolution eight, safe storage of firearms. McKinnon?
Aye.
Foster, aye.
Walker, aye.
Pennington, aye.
Fidler, aye.
Furia, aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Gordon.
Thank you, Gordon.
You're welcome.
Um, action is required on the minutes from the school committee meeting of October 10th, 2023.
So moved.
Moved by Scott.
Second.
Second by Becky. McKinnon?
Abstain. I, I couldn't find them on the, uh, posted, uh, so I, I haven't been able to review them.
Okay. Foster, aye.
Walker, aye.
Pennington, aye.
Fidler, aye.
Furia, aye.
Um, action is required after review on payroll warrant 15 PS dated 10/4/23. McKinnon?
Abstain.
Foster, aye.
Abstain.
Pennington, aye.
Fidler, aye.
Abstain.
Um, action is required after review on accounts payable warrants 14 SV dated 10/4/23 and 16 SV dated 10/18/23. Uh, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Moved by Peter? We haven't been doing motion second this whole time, have we?
No, we just skipped it on the last one. We've done it every time.
We've been doing
I need to say one thing before you finish that? So we just had, do we have three?
I was just thinking the same thing.
And three abstentions? I'm not sure that that
On which one?
Uh, for the payroll.
Payroll one?
Did he abstain from the
He did.
I'm, I'm, I'm coming back tomorrow, so I'll take a look at them, I'll, I'll get the hard copies tomorrow.
I mean, it's okay if we don't, they still get paid.
I'm sure I'll be fine with it.
So are you changing your abstention?
No, because I, I can't do, I can't do anything different till I see them.
If we
We probably have to vote on them at the next meeting.
This is a dilemma for a six-member board.
I know. But it's, it's not gonna Table it, it's not gonna impact anything, everybody's still
They'll still get paid.
They still get paid? Yes?
But you have a majority with abstentions, right?
No. Cuz you abstain, Scott abstains and Gordon abstains, it's three-three. So it doesn't pass.
It doesn't pass.
So we have to table it then?
Right.
Before I'm voting it down.
Because you two can't vote on it.
And people It goes, it already goes to the town and they paid, right? They'll still get paid? Yeah, so they're still gonna get paid, we're not holding anybody's paycheck up. We can just table it till the next one.
We have to.
Can an action item be voted on in a virtual meeting? If needed?
An action item?
This is an action item. Could an action item be voted on in a virtual meeting if, if, so could, could tomorrow after Gordon gets home and he looks at it, there, no, cuz that's be posted?
Yeah, it would have to be posted.
So in, in 72 hours, could a electronic meeting be scheduled to vote on one action item?
If we did Friday, we had a Friday morning, five-minute meeting?
To vote for this after Gordon sees it? Is that something doable, allowed?
We could.
Can we just table it till the meeting on the 12th?
If you
I mean, they're getting
If you guys sign off, if you guys sign off on it, whoever in, can sign off on it and leave that copy in the office, when I go in tomorrow, if I sign off on it, then we're all set, right?
No.
No, we have to do it together.
You're such a stickler, Scott.
The lawyer's in the building.
Okay.
So it didn't pass for right now?
My first, I have to say, I've been on the committee for nine and a half years, this is the first time we ever had this issue. That's not bad.
It, it's not bad, but it doesn't change the fact that we have the issue.
Yeah.
Um, all right, so we'll table it, I mean, we, there's nothing we can do about it, it doesn't pass, so there's nothing, let's
Table it.
And it didn't pass?
Yeah, so it's not tabled, you had a motion.
And we already voted and it didn't pass? Can we
I would make a motion to take this back. I'm motioning to, to bring this payroll warrant back to a future meeting mutually agreed upon for whatever the date's gonna be.
A second.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
Okay. Moved by Ellen, seconded by Becky. McKinnon?
Aye.
Foster, aye.
Can I vote to table something I can't vote on?
Yes, just do it.
Maybe, is my vote? I don't know what to tell you.
Just say yes.
Sure, yes.
Walker, aye.
Walker, something.
Pennington, aye.
Fidler, aye.
Furia, aye.
So are we gonna try to have in, like, a quick five-minute? He did, aye, yeah. That's gonna get tabled. Let's table it and solve it as soon as legally possible.
That was great.
That's fantastic. Um, action is required after review on accounts payable warrants 14 SV dated 10/4/23 and 16 SV dated 10/18
We should probably pick, we should probably, oh, no, we'll have, never mind, they don't have to
They don't have to abstain for this one. Yeah, I already had that
We're allowed to party on this one.
Uh, 16 SV dated 10/18/23. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ellen.
Second.
Second by Becky. McKinnon?
Abstain.
Foster, aye.
Walker, aye.
Oh, Pennington, aye, sorry.
Fidler, aye.
Furia, aye.
The motion passes. Uh, now I move to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose One, to discuss complaints or charges brought against the superintendent of schools and not to return to open session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ellen, second by Becky.
I think Scott said first, but I'll take
Um, roll call, McKinnon?
Aye.
Foster, aye.
Walker, aye.
Pennington, aye.
Fidler, aye.
Furia, aye.